Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 3 meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. I will note first that this meeting is authorized by Executive Order 202.1, last updated and extended as 202.94 by Governor Andrew Cuomo, which permits virtual meetings such as this one. Let me first confirm that each planning board member is alone or not with anyone who might try to influence your vote. Ms. Weiser?
I'm alone.
Thank you. Ms. Lawson?
I am alone.
Mr. Pickett? You did still Brent?
I am alone. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
I am alone.
Ms. Napoli?
Hello.
Vice Chair Dexter?
I'm alone.
Please join me as we reaffirm our loyalty to the Stars and Stripes, the flag of this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Hudson Valley Hospice House. The applicants are seeking site plan and special use permit approval, as well as to consolidate two lots or minor subdivision under our code. We've been discussing this a lot back and forth. We even had an offline meeting that I'll discuss initially. We get a motion to reopen the public hearing.
I'll make that motion and Dexter.
There's a second? Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion's or abstains? I mean, any nays or abstentions, sorry, the motion carries. So, we had a meeting yesterday that I think was very productive between the applicants, me, Ms. Weiser, Mr. Sotero. So basically, looking at the last comments, I summarized, started by summarizing that it appeared that there was a preference for a one-way 20-foot wide drive going around the back, but that honestly, it's okay to keep it at 22 feet because there wasn't enough drive to push it that far. And Ms. Zurfus has also pointed out that there are gray changes where they might need a wider drive. We did, though, discuss needing the painted crosswalk so that employees could safely reach the waste receptacle that's proposed in the rear. And the applicants agreed to put this in because it is a signal to drivers that people may be walking back there at any time. Mr. Berger will notify Mr. Sotero when they have a clearer idea of what the substrate conditions are for the proposed stormwater trench. Maybe nine to 10 feet deep. It's going from the top of the southwest corner, down and around northeast to the back to the stormwater detention pond. We think that there's a lot of rock in there, and so we're interested to see what impacts that might have on neighboring wells. It may be nothing, but depending on the results, Mr. Sotero may be speaking to Department of Health along with the applicants. Planning Board members are free to join me to see, to walk the southern perimeter. We noted last time that the fence at six feet tall will not do really a lot of screening, although it will probably prevent lights from coming up, car lights, but we're curious to see whether it needs to be placed in the entire area. Because there is landscaping proposed, cedar and pine evergreens, which will probably do a lot better job of screening the neighboring properties along the south side. The applicant and the representatives will also evaluate the likelihood of sheet flow and possibly creating hazardous or frozen conditions, and also requiring heavy salting, because that sort of obviates the green stormwater that's proposed now for the drop-off areas. I'm not sure where they are yet, but that's for discussion amongst the applicant and Mr. Berger and Ms. Zurfus and the architect. The applicants have submitted a color for the privacy fence along both sides, the northern and the southern. Please, I wrote my colleague's review. It's a brown kind of gray color. I think actually it looks about the color of fallen leaves and the tree bark. Oh, there we are. Thank you. That's what's proposed, which I think will do a lot better job of blending in, so it doesn't look like white popping out to the neighbors who live again on the south side and the north side. And the last comment that I pointed out from the last minute or meeting was that there's a preference to stagger the trees in kind of a zigzag fashion along 9G rather than a row. And this will make it look a little less formal. And we also discussed the fact that everyone seemed to agree that around the actual building, it would be appropriate to have it being very park-like, so a lawn with manicured plantings, et cetera, and then as you go out, maybe still some water to the trees, but then around the edges leaving the very natural area. This will also provide more screening. In the meantime, the ZBA granted the area variance for the applicant, so they are free to proceed now. The variance was conditioned upon us combining the lots. This hearing has been on all three, the site plan, some special use permit and minor subdivision. And I'm going to propose at some point tonight that we close the portion of public hearing on the minor lot subdivision, so we can consider taking action, accepting for sketch and possibly just going right to final at the next meeting, which would not be a public hearing. And also in the interim, we have a new submission from the applicants, and I will now turn it over to Ms. Zurfus and her capable hands to walk us through. Michelle?
Hi. I realize that the site plan I have on here will be, was the older one, but this house, then if you go to the site plan on the next page, page two, the, this doesn't show the sidewalk that we've added between Violet Avenue and the building right along the bio retention up there on the northern side of the driveway. Off of Violet Avenue on the north side of the driveway. There's now a sidewalk proposed, and there's also a bench proposed up by the Violet Avenue as requested. So that was, those were the primary things there. Now, if you go to the next slide, this is new in your packages since this, since our last, since the submission that you have now, and this is for the monument sign, which is going to be up in the front. And it incorporates colors that blend in with the building. It will need a variance, and the sign designer is going to apply for the variance. But this is, again, this reflects a lot of what the building features.
If I could interject, Michelle, Mr. Paul at Timely Signs knows our code and was going back and forth with me to make sure it was compliant. And I said, the only thing we can't do anything about is the symbol, because we can only increase dimensionally based on, it's a wall sign on a building, and that's for aesthetic merit or distance from the road or design speed of the road. This is pretty close to the road, so it doesn't apply to that section. I'm sorry if it applied for the variance, but I think the sign looks nice myself. We'll hear from the other board members.
Well, if it's gonna slow the application down, you could resubmit without the sign type and just have the monument approved as part of site plan.
That's what I had suggested, was they were showing this to us, because it may be that this, there are two options, as everyone knows, for signs. You can apply for a sign permit, which is separate from site plan, but you should show the location for the signs on the site plan itself, that way you don't need a site plan amendment. So I offered that opportunity to Mr. Biker at Timely Signs as well. He's hoping that they'll be able to get through the variance quickly.
So, the, the, the decision for the applicant is, do you want this sign tied to the site plan where you would have to go get a variance before the site plan could be signed? Or do you want to apply separately for the variance and for the sign, and then the building component and site component could move forward?
I would, I think it would be best to split, split them up.
Split them up? Okay, thank you.
And, but, you know, it's also, even though we'd be coming back for the building, it'd be good that the planning board members, so they'll, I mean, they're seeing this, and this will then get taken separate, but if you have
Okay.
They have any comments?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
As I understood, the chairman, we could keep the monument sign located on the site plan as it currently is without the verbiage on the sign, and then apply for a variance based on the size of one, one portion of the verbiage.
That's correct.
I would prefer to do it that way if, if that sounds, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Michelle, I didn't mean to interrupt. I apologize.
But that's perfectly fine. I'm glad you did. Okay, and if you, you know, go to the next, the sign will have light. As you can see, this is similar, so the lights will be canister light sitting up in the canopy over the top, directed down, which complies with lighting, and it's not going to be glaring. And then the other thing I had was the fence color. Just, just Chairman Dupree, just to let you know that the lighting person for the site lighting did a quick calculation, and the lighting is shown as less than two, the average is less than two.
Perfect, thank you.
When we resubmit the lighting, when we resubmit all the plans after the deep test, that will be on the plan, if you have it in writing.
Thank you.
I believe that, that's for the consolidation for tonight.
Thank you. So let me start with our consultants. Let me start with Mr. Sotero first tonight. Pete?
Wow, switching it up. The chairman did a, did a good job of summarizing our meeting we had yesterday. It was a very productive meeting, and I think we got some things clarified. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time. I think that, you know, the biggest item that we discussed was that, as the chairman said, in the next couple of weeks, Michelle's office is going to be out there. They're going to be doing some deep hole tests to, to try to identify, you know, the extent of the rock in the building and in the stormwater management facility areas and some of the deeper, deeper trenches that are going to have a storm drain line in. So, you know, so I think that, you know, a lot of our further discussions and like comments.
Oh, Pete froze.
You know, testing, and then, you know, we agreed that we would be working to
Pete, can you turn off the video?
Hold on a second. How's that? All right?
You made, you needed to start over again. You froze most of the time you were talking.
Yeah, sorry about that. I did get, I did get a thing that said you have a bad internet, you know, connection. That only seems to happen when I have a Hyde Park meeting. Why is that? Seriously, that's, you know, weird. I'm sorry. So, so basically, once we, once we get the soil test information, that will identify the rock. It'll also, they're going to have to do some percolation tests for the stormwater management areas, so, you know, so we really don't want to go too much further with the review of the SWIP, and so I think that was, I think that was basically it. You know, the rest of the stuff is relatively, you know, minor. They're going to take a look at, you know, the sheet flow in the parking lot, and again, that's, it's really more of an applicant's issue. So I think that's, I think that's it. So we'll work together and, you know, we'll go from there.
And thank you, Pete, for taking the time to meet yesterday. I know it really helped me to kind of look macro at the issues. I think it helped the applicants as well. Ms. Axelson, comments?
Again, I, you did a great job summarizing, Michael, and I know a lot was covered at the meeting the other day. Just a couple of points. I think it'll help the board, and I know, Michelle, this is, there was a concern about cluttered plans, but having the limited disturbance line on those other plan sheets, I figure you're just turning on a CAD layer. And then I think it'll help the board evaluate landscaping regarding the issue with the fence, so.
Liz, I can make it simple. I changed the limited disturbance to be the entire area outside of that tree line. So I've got, I've got that scallop tree line on there. The whole rest of site is disturbance.
And then I did have a discussion with Tad about the notation, so I put that in there pretty specifically so that it was as the board wanted regarding retaining trees, beginning with the wooded area nearest the redevelopment maintained in a park-like manner, which I think is consistent with, with the intentions of Hudson Valley Hospice. And then I realized at the meeting the other day, there was a question about one of the comments regarding lighting, having to do with reducing lighting levels for the three poles situated sort of along the northern boundary, that that was of concern. Another way to handle that, and honestly, I worded it to say, consider reducing the lighting levels. Wasn't sure how the board felt about that. Another way to handle that would be to do some shielding, and the idea was just to reduce the amount of light that might escape to nearby properties. And that's it. Most of the comments were engineering, and it sounds like the access for people going to the dumpster is going to be dealt with, so that's it.
We missed you at the meeting, and I did ask Michelle to submit what the average foot candles are for the whole site to make sure. And I believe that the lights they're proposing are dark sky compliant, but if we feel as though they need to be at a shield added to maybe make it more directional, then that's okay. The applicants, we did discuss this briefly at yesterday's meeting, and the applicants indicated that there's also a safety issue. People getting off at night because this is 24/7 care. So they'd like to have some sort of safety level, which as long as the foot candles, the average on the entire site go down to two or at two. And if it doesn't extend over the property line, which it does not, then the board can find it acceptable. This is up to you. And please weigh in on that, because Liz had a question about it, as well as the fence color. Ms. Polodoro?
I don't have any outstanding legal issues, except that if we're waiting for a deep test, does it make sense to continue this for two months out rather than bringing them back next month?
We could discuss doing it either a month or six weeks, depending, because, and Joe can speak about this himself. Mr. Berger indicated he wanted to wait till the snow was gone, because that way they can really see what they're looking at instead of combining it with snow. And if the weather holds, then we might see a drastic reduction. At the same time, I believe some of my colleagues were saying that Chris is not through snow plowing yet, so we'll have to wait and see about that. Anyway, Ms. Moss, comments?
No, my, my questions were answered about the sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then let me start with Vice Chair Dexter tonight. Anne, any comments?
Um, not, not many, other than congratulations on the variance and, and the ability to proceed here. And the plans have been, they've really come together nicely. I mean, they really started out not too bad, but I really feel that taking the comments and the inputs and use them to create a really beautiful plan. Thanks.
I agree. Thank you, Anne. That's nicely said. Stephanie, comments?
I, I completely agree with Anne. I think it's come together nicely. I appreciate the applicant's willingness to, you know, respond to some of our concerns all along the process, and I'm delighted that it's coming to fruition. We're almost there, so I'm very happy about that. I don't have any new comments.
Thank you. That's a great comment. Victoria, I believe you had another comment you just sent me a little note about, real quickly?
Yes, sorry. Michelle, when, when you put up the plans before, I couldn't tell. Are the bench and sidewalk in the right of way or on the private property?
They're, they're all going to, everything's on the private property. Nothing's in DOT right away.
So, you know that we'll have to work and have an easement for the sidewalk.
Right, just like for the office.
Yep, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a good comment. Mr. Oliver, comments?
No new comments other than congratulations and thank you, and thank you for everything you've been doing with getting the plans to us and making the adjustments, and hope to see everything going smoothly going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Pickett?
Yes, I liked the color that you picked out for the fence. I've got a white polymer one from Adams for a number of years, and the color that you picked will go nicely with not having to clean it, you know, once a year, twice a year. Then I like the sign and the monument. I think it looks great. It'll fit the building, and I think it'll fit the area, be an improvement to the area. And the only other question I had was in the last write-up, there was, was some discussion on the well placement and septic placement. Has there been any, is that still in motion or has it been settled?
Michelle, do you want to answer that?
Sure, good. I would, for the most part, as far as I'm concerned, they're set. They're, we, last summer, we went with the health department. So they saw the septic, and they've seen the deep test, so that kind of ties where it is. And then the well, we needed to try to get it 100 feet from things, and then as much inside the site as 200 feet. So the, so the well and the septic are pretty well set. We just haven't gotten the final health department nod that says they're fine.
Okay, all right, fine. Okay, then I look forward to getting it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Napoli, comments?
Yes, um, thank you for all of your hard work. It's always been a pleasure working with you. Um, and it has made the project so much nicer. As a, in one of the occupations of my life, I was a nurse, and I spent years at Sloan Kettering, besides other places. And once you work with the dying, you cannot truly appreciate the comfort a place like this will bring people. So I am glad you stuck to it, and we will be all to benefit, hopefully not too soon, though, and so thank you.
I think we have a few birthday candles left on our cake ahead before we make it over there. But thank you for those very touching words. And Ms. Weiser, comments?
I'll join my colleagues in thanking you for all your hard work. I think it's a great project. The building looks wonderful. We're really happy to have you in Hyde Park. I also agree, the sign is really lovely looking, and then the brown fencing is fine as well, so thanks.
So, that means, thank you all, colleagues, for being so quick and brisk and efficient. Members of the public who would like to speak, I believe Ms. Hudak is here. Donna? You can unmute yourself and put yourself on video if you'd like to make comments.
Okay. Oh, I think my picture, oh, sorry.
We can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Um, no, I like the, the sign. That's beautiful, and I appreciate the, the light shielding comment and the way the lights are, um, going to protect our properties and the trees, the evergreens. So I think you're doing a really nice job, and thank you for working with us and listening to our comments.
Thank you. As I've said before, your kinds of comments, the people who live near us really do hone in our work, because you're the ones who live there, and we can drive by and walk on it, but it's not the same as living next door. Mr. Leonard, Mr. Leonard just joined in. Brian, do you want to make any comments?
Hi, everybody. How are you? I want to say thank you, the same as Donna, as willing to hear our voice and our concerns. I would like to know if it is open for future, if there is an issue, say, the trees die or the fence gets knocked down, and we bring it to attention. Would you be willing to hear our voice then also?
So I can answer that very easily, Brian. These are, once it leaves our, once it leaves the planning board, and once it's actually constructed, et cetera, and it gets a CO, then there are notes on all the plans that say landscaping must remain in healthy condition or replace dying dead, et cetera. That's standard for us. Then also, if a fence falls down, that's also, that's part of site plan, so they'd be required to put it up. However, you wouldn't come to the planning board. You'd go to the zoning administrator likely.
Zoning administration? Okay.
Yep, because there's actually a form for complaints for things like that.
And it's, it's not a complaint. It's working with you guys, because you've worked with us, and we want to keep that reputation as a working family and neighborhood, because this is who we are, and we're the neighborhood that we're allowing you in, and we want to know it as a neighborhood still. So with that, everyone can agree that the view, as lovely as a building would be, nobody wants to see it in their backyard. But we're willing to accept it as well as everyone else and make it appropriate for everyone and work together with everyone so that it's appropriate, functional, storm drainage. The high yield of snow that we had this year is an issue with all of us with the water. So that's going to be something for you guys to, to keep an eye on for the drainage and maybe have it as a, an inspection spot over the years, so that it doesn't become overgrown and plugged up and functional. Because it's not a gully or a full drainage system. It's just a pathway through the woods. So it's something to keep in mind and maybe just make notes on that we have to maintain our own, so it's, it's a neighborhood, and it would be appreciated.
Tad, Ms. Moss is also the, believe it or not, she has another title besides zoning administrator. It's called stormwater management officer. And that's actually Tad's nodding, but that's, I believe, one of her favorite activities, because she knows a lot about, she knows more about stormwater than anybody I know except for Pete, a couple of engineers.
It's phenomenal on how much we get down here on this end, and we're just a shy portion away from it, but it's phenomenal on how much water I get from 9G.
So they've, they've shown a snow storage area, and it's actually at a low point below all the houses where you guys live in your neighborhood, and I believe it's supposed to drain also, not supposed to. It will also be draining into the same stormwater detention pond.
Hopefully.
Well, that
You can't keep it out of the woods. That's the thing, and, and we get all of that. The neighbors, the, the yard water is, it's phenomenal what we get. And it's, it goes downhill. I've never seen water go uphill yet, so we're down, we're down on the end.
Mr. Sotero, I can assure you, we'll make certain that it goes where it's intended to go, right, Pete?
Pete, you're back, Pete, you're back on camera. Yes.
At any rate, if you notice that there's ponding or flooding or something else, you can also contact Tad as a stormwater management officer to discuss it with her, because we, we are an MS4 town. That means that we do our own stormwater details. They still have to comply with DEC. That's the easiest way to explain it. But Tad is pretty, I don't know how much of your time you devote toward stormwater, but it's a lot, I know, Tad. She's nodding, that's all. So at any rate, that, I think we can alleviate your concerns.
Thank you. Or you can also
You can also always speak to your ward member for your, the town council. At the moment, that is Stephen Woodcock, who's your town board member, represents Ward Three where you guys live. But he can also help, you know, if you can't get through to Tad or something, that's what the elected officials are here for, is to respond to constituents.
Well, again, I thank you all for working together with us, and I speak for the neighborhood. Everyone here has a voice, and we've all spoken what we wish to speak about, and you've all listened and taken our concerns, and that means a lot to us.
Of course, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, do you want to add something? You'll have to unmute yourself again, Ms. DeGilio?
I just, I, I wanted to listen in to the last meeting that I could be, participate in, but all my questions have been answered beautifully. All my concerns are being addressed, and I thank you all for that.
On behalf of the board and our consultants, you are very welcome, and I, the applicants, I should stress, are also eager to make sure that you're not unhappy neighbors, because that's not good for them either, once they're opening up and running. No, it really isn't. I can assure you. So, because that's what the process is for when we have public hearings, and this is not the last public hearing. We'll just be journeying it out to a lengthier time, because each time we host these, we charge the applicant for escrow for our consultants. So it's just easier if they can work behind the scenes to figure out the rock and the water, well placement exactly, et cetera. Back to an earlier question that my colleague had, Mr. Pickett. I believe that, that the sewer is definitely, the wastewater treatment area is definitely where it's going to be, because there's not a much other area there. It also provides some screening. The well looks like it's 99%, knowing where it's supposed to be going to be there too, but that will be determined when it's, once they start doing testing. Any other comments from our consultants or from the applicants? Mr. Kaminsky, Ms. Zurfus, Mr. Berger, Ms. Richardo?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. I want to assure the, the neighbors of Hudson Valley Hospice House that we are also available to meet with you and listen to any and have any discussion relative to any questions you might have or issues that have come to your attention. We, we need to know if there's any problem with any of the neighbors so that we can work together to solve it.
So the answer there, Brian, is you can also, as neighbors, you can also be good neighbors, and before you go to complain to Tad, you can actually speak to the site manager.
Michael, I appreciate that. I really do. Thank you.
Great offer. That's a great offer, Michael. Really seriously, great.
Thank you.
So when would, so going back to the applicants now, when would you guys like us to, we don't, we can close the portion of the public hearing tonight to consider on the subdivision, so we can go ahead and combine those, your variance, and it's, it's good, because that's the main condition. But how much time do you think you'll need, Joe and Michelle, for the work on the, the rock, the trenching, et cetera?
I think I should be done with that in three weeks, barring weather. As soon as the weather, as soon as the weather's done. Bar on weather. As soon as the weather, as soon as the weather's done, I'm out there. So I'm thinking week and a half, the weather's going to be cleared and we're out. That's just a matter of days after that.
Yeah, so we can adjourn this into a month, the portion, the public hearing that's still on the site plan and the special use permit?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, there being no other comments. Can I get a motion to first close the public hearing portion of this that's devoted to subdivision? And I didn't assign that out so anyone can take it?
I'll make that motion, Chris Oliver.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Dexter.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So we'll get that on the agenda. Victoria, is that enough time for you to do a, a resolution for combining the lots? I, I don't see any reason why we can't accept for sketch and go to final at the same time.
We've actually already accepted for sketch.
Oh, that's right. We did. Sorry. I didn't look at my file completely.
So, um, we can go right to, right to final approval.
That's why we pay you for being so smart and having a good younger memories than I do. Thank you. So then I get a motion to adjourn this to April the, the April the.
Michael, can I interrupt you for a sec?
Sure.
It's Brian. Um, for the drilling and, uh, the plans moving forward, is there going to be another opportunity for us to join you to follow along with all the motions?
Oh, yes. That'll, that's, we're going to set this, the next, we're going to continue the public hearing to, it'd be April the.
Seven. The first meeting is the seventh.
Thank you. April the seventh. Thank you. Sorry. I'm looking through my calendar. And you'll have it. So what, what happens is is once they get through with what they're going to do and have the results, then we'll come and present it and discuss at the April seventh meeting and that'll be a public hearing and you're all welcome to attend as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Michael. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Don't worry. Um, so I, make it a motion to set this for April the seventh.
I'll make that motion, Chris Oliver.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll second that and Dexter.
I just realized what order you guys went. The first one. Thank you for being so smart. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 I love working with this board. Thank you. And thanks again, all of you from the public for joining us, Brian, Donna and Susan. We'll see you in a month.
Yeah, thank you.
Stay safe, stay well, stay safe, stay well.
You too.
Night, everybody.
And applicant, good night, Liz. Thank you.
Happy St. Patty's Day.
You too.
You too. Thank you.
And, oh, that's right. It's coming up. And Michael, Mr. Kaminsky, Mr. Berger, Ms. Zerpus and Mr. Machado. If you need us anytime, just send an email out and we'll set up a meeting. And Joe, I really would like to go walk the perimeter on the south side with you. You get an opportunity and it's a nice day. Just, oh, hey, you've gone back to outer space, I see. Um, you'll have to come back when you want to come to Hyde Park. Land again. At any rate, when you have a date, just let me know and I'll circulate it out to a few other people in case they want to join us.
That sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe.
Good night.
Good night.
Next item on the agenda is a workshop. Our public hearing portion of the meeting is ended as of now. Um, this is a new application, so it's a matter of, sort of say first impression, Victoria, you can shoot me. This is a minor subdivision approval for two lots. They're essentially creating a, an 18, a little bit of an 18 acre lot. Again, this is located at 64 Falkil Road and we have Peter Scott, who's here to represent, uh, the potential new owners. Mr. Scott, welcome.
Uh, good evening, as long as you can hear me.
Yes.
So basically, uh, we had a pre-app, uh, meeting on the particular project. Uh, and it did result in some amendments to the plan I could walk through with the board members. Again, uh, this is a 28.5 acre parcel. We're subdividing it into two portions, uh, 8.5 and approximately 19.9 acres. Uh, and, uh, basically our amendments have to do with the roads. If I could share my screen with you, is it possible now?
Yes.
I'll share it. If I can. That's wrong.
If you're having problems, I have the context, construction and driveway PDFs I could share. Just tell me which ones you need.
Um, I have them here. I was going to get my thing cleaned. Hold on one second. Oops. Maybe I have to use yours for a second. Am I doing this right? Nope. Uh, let's use, uh, well, I have one here I can share. Hold on. So basically. Everybody seeing that?
No.
No. We're seeing your files, your download files.
Oh.
The list.
Let me try that again. Sorry.
May I go to a different icon on your screen when you go, when you get out of the screen share?
Uh, does that work still?
No.
No. Okay. Let me try and share here. Hold on. Stop the share. Try it one more time. Sorry about that.
Peter, I do have your files. I can share them if you just tell me which files you want to see first.
Uh, how's it work now? Yes?
There we go.
That was a tough one. Okay. Uh, so basically what we have before you is, um, uh, when we were last spoke, uh, we were working with the, um, fire department compliance. Uh, and so what we did is we, uh, had a driveway, uh, earlier that extended up to our proposed house, uh, and, um, pool sites. And according to what we did is we, we ended up making a loop road, uh, going around, uh, a pond slash wetland, which exists on the top of the hillside, uh, to afford, uh, an ability for the, uh, fire, uh, safety vehicles to move about the site. The next thing we did is we added a pull off for the fire trucks here. Uh, because our length of our road, we need several pull off areas. And the second one we created here was this location. And the next one we created was up here on the right-hand side. Uh, as you're going downhill or left on going uphill. And so we broke the segments of the pull offs uh, into under 500 mill feet each. Uh, and, and again, the cul-de-sac serves as a turnaround area. Uh, and that was pretty much the major amendment that we made during the subdivision application. Uh, to clarify where this project, uh, sits in all the various compliances such as CICA uh, and, uh, DECDP, uh, we're proposing with all this, these activities that is extending the roadway and putting the pool and we moved the house to this location and our guest house is in this location. Plus all the septic areas which are tested, uh, and pending submission to the health department. There's three separate septic areas. We have 4.2 acres of disturbance. So we're, we're under the five acres for, for a SWIP with treatment. Uh, but we are proposing treatment anyway, uh, for this particular property. Uh, and we're using, um, a bio retention structures because they have an RV component which allows me to attenuate, uh, storm flows. Uh, and we're, we're putting in, uh, a, uh, one bio retention structure here, uh, one there and one down here. Uh, and we have a stormwater management, uh, plan which has three distinct, uh, analysis points. Uh, one to do west, uh, one to do east and one to the north, uh, coming down the driveway for compliance. Uh, another item we took care of is we did speak to DEC and Army Corps. Uh, it appears that, uh, all these various, uh, components on the, um, on the site plan, we did, we, we did give you a drawing referred to as a CRM, uh, plan. And I could probably hit that for you if I'm lucky. Let's see if that's it. So we gave you a drawing called a context, a context map, the aerial typography. And what's most important pretty much is this map here, uh, in compliance for your subdivision regulations. And with, with contact with DE, uh, DEC, uh, and the Army Corps, it appears that all these items that are, uh, we're draining to are under the control of the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, they're not DEC regulated. In fact, they're not listed as DEC, uh, regulated areas. Uh, they are all to the, uh, east of our project. Uh, and so we have contacted local Army Corps and started, we're starting to work on any impacts you might have on this wet one with a, with a roadway circling around it. Uh, and we also looked at, uh, again, uh, any increase of stormwater coming down hillside. With this map in front of you, we did describe all the soil types on the particular property. Uh, and they are all pretty much the same. Uh, and they happen to be, um, the Nassau Cardigan complexes, uh, and they have some overburden of, uh, medium to well-drained soils. Uh, and also, uh, I did one more thing on, on this map. Is at the bottom of this, uh, plan we gave you, uh, we described what all these, uh, acronyms, uh, mean in terms of the A, B, C, D, E and F categories. So you get a feel for what the slopes mean. Uh, and the gist of the story is, is that we are utilizing all the lands, uh, where we're developing are either in the B, uh, or C soil, uh, soil slopes, which are less than 8%. Uh, the last thing is, I was going to go over. May, see if this works. Uh, so we did give you a revised driveway profile. Uh, and we, uh, clearly showed, uh, there'll be some improvements on the driveway to make it work. Uh, typically, we've shown exactly where it all takes place. Uh, a little tough to describe, uh, in this scale. But what's important to realize is that most of the site, uh, is very flat on top of this hillside. Uh, and it's less than a 5% slope. Uh, so it's, it's very easy to maneuver, uh, these, uh, emergency vehicles in this arc as shown. And even to access the higher plateau, uh, we are relatively flat in that area. And upon closer scrutiny of the plan we gave you, we have stationing, uh, geometries and slopes in all those areas with respective improvements, just to move the project along. One more item, if I can get to this right here. Let's see. Whoop, wrong one. Okay. So, um, what we, uh, want to talk about then is, um, we have various open space, uh, areas proposed on the project. If I can get those for you. Let's see. It's this one. Uh, is it shown? It doesn't appear like the layers on. Uh, well, I can describe what we're proposing. So we're required to provide, uh, 30% uh, of open space, uh, which totals about 8.55 acres for the entire project. And so we're proposing, uh, 1.3 acres of open space on lot 1A. Uh, we're proposing, uh, in this area here, uh, we're proposing, uh, 3.7 acres of open space. And we're creating a strip along the perimeter of this portion of the property, uh, which totals, um, a 3.5 acres. Uh, and again, uh, we are, we are somewhat constrained with the open space. Uh, because of, we have to find certain areas where we can reach, uh, suitable soils, uh, for the health department. They've already inspected it. Done our person deep test and everything else. Uh, and the last item is, uh, we're keeping, uh, a, a big buffer here facing north is where, where the view of the property is off into the distance. So we don't want, we want to keep this all intact. It's all heavily treed and will remain so. And then this buffer on the, uh, south and, uh, eastern portion of the property, uh, we're maintaining a minimum of 100 foot wide buffer, uh, where we're adjacent to other lands undeveloped. But nevertheless, uh, we're, uh, keeping the buffer between ourselves, uh, and these, um, relatively, uh, undisturbed lands at this point in time. Uh, and that's the extent of it. Uh, can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Uh, let me start, well, first, let me just point out for my colleagues as well as the consultants. The current owner of the larger, the, the current site, um, has, I guess the right term is to say denuded much of the property. Trees have been removed. Um, the freshwater pond you see up at the top, uh, right, yeah, right in through there, I believe was actually created by perhaps the owner looking to almost excavate. Um, so there are trees in the open space area that's to the north, uh, that Mr. Scott pointed out. But the open space that's along the east side, it's, there's not a lot of trees there in the first place. So I just, and the open space as proposed is also not contiguous and that is a requirement in our code. So I just want to make sure that all my, the other board members have a chance to think about that and weigh in, um, as we move forward. We start with Ms. Franson, planning consultant?
Yeah, so, um, I had some comments that I'll formalize in a memo. Um, I think we've talked about, uh, Fire District and a potential review by them of the proposed driveway, uh, to make sure that access can be provided in as much as you show, um, you know, pullouts for vehicles. I think that's, um, in general, a review that needs to be done. Um, contiguous open space, uh, Michael touched upon it. The requirements of the average density provisions uh, indicate that the open space is supposed to be meaningful and preserve the important features of the site. And here they seem to, um, to some extent really include steep slopes, you know, areas that might not be developable. And, you know, part of the question is whether the ponds, the freshwater wetlands, um, have some still quality, uh, to which there should be some preservation of them or not. And that's something that the planning board needs to discuss. Um, the lot lines themselves between 1A, uh, and the two properties essentially, it's unclear, uh, at least from my reading of the drawing, how the lot lines extend to Falkil Road. Um, there, there's, doesn't seem to be a line there, um, or a line's missing, but again, it's unclear. Uh, eventually at some point, um, you know, there'll be, uh, a need for an easement to make sure that, um, access is provided to the existing house, um, on the property. Uh, the EAF, um, as a matter of policy, New York State DEC policy, um, EAFs are supposed to be run through EAF mapper. And when I looked at the EAF, um, the one comment I had is that if you look at the species, it says, yes, that there's some kind of sensitive species on the site, but the actual information in the box is blank. When I ran the EAF mapper, Indiana bat came up. So, yeah, so to the extent that the planning board wants to refer this to DEC for any comments, um, I'll note that Indiana bat, um, is indicated as being potentially present on the site.
Yep.
Um, if you have emails from providers, uh, or sorry, from, uh, agencies, whether it's Army Corps or whether it's DEC, any communications, it'd be beneficial for the planning board to have that as part of the record. Um, to, to support, you know, your thinking in terms of, uh, um, again, the, the, and, and the jurisdiction of the, the wetlands that are on site.
Yep.
Um, we do note the Army Corps of Engineer potentially regulated wetlands. And then lastly, on the properties, you're showing, um, guest houses. And in terms of density, uh, could you go through sort of the calculation of how you arrived at the density? Um, and how you may have considered the guest houses?
Well, I considered, uh, there, there's a main house and a guest house. And if you candid, I, I just took the total acreage and divided it through by the, uh, number of dwelling units to get a, uh, a density count on it. Uh, the, uh, how, the lot is, uh, 19 acres and we, uh, we, we didn't count, there's a pool house, uh, which is not habitable. It's, it's, well, it's habitable, but it doesn't have sleeping areas. Uh, and that, if, if we had to, we consider that also as a dwelling unit if you wanted to in the calculations. But currently we just kind of, the two buildings that were proposed on the property.
Is there, um, you know, with regard to the guest house, um, what makes it a guest house versus in the future becoming an apartment or a dwelling, you know, will there be some kind of conditions or limitations, uh, that the, uh, owner is willing to place on this? So, you know, I, I think to get a sense of, you know, what this will be in the future.
Sure. Yeah, I, I can put something together on that. I, uh, currently, our current, uh, procedure is we were going to build the guest house first. Uh, because it, it can be done in a timely manner. Uh, and then we, we have a much bigger residence proposed as a main house. And so initially we would start with, uh, occupancy in the two-bedroom, you, uh, project called the guest house. And then convert over to the main house at a future date. Uh, and if we had to. And if we had to file a certain paperwork to make that happen, we'd be willing to do that.
Yeah, I think to some extent, it's important, you know, what they're considered. You know, I don't, I know that the, the town and its zoning regulations, you know, you allow accessory apartments. You obviously allow single family dwellings. But, you know, the guest houses, again, are they accessory to something? If you build the, the guest house first, you know, you don't have the prince, I guess, the principal building or principal use before putting the accessory use on. If it's even considered accessory. So again, I think we just need to have a, a good understanding and consult with the, the planning board attorney in terms of how to view these guest houses going forward.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
We, we have a, an attorney on board who will help also assist in that presentation. I'm sure in the past, I've done similar projects and we've had. We couldn't get a CO until we did some, certain items as we moved through such a project. Typical of the scale of the project we work on all the time. So we have some paperwork we give you. I could go back to sharing the drawing, but I can describe it to you very carefully, quickly answer some questions. It's a flag lot and on the, and on the site plan drawing SY1, we do have a flag going all the way down to the street frontage. It's on the far northern portion of the property. It doesn't follow where the road is, but it does follow the property line. And it meets all the frontage criteria and the widths, et cetera, for making it a viable lot. And it's, it's, again, it's, it's a, it's a strip about twenty five feet wide going all the way down to Falk Hill Road. We will have an easement across the driveway. We would like to discuss how wide you want the easement. Because we have stormwater, in the old days, easement was just a driveway. But now the easement has to be somewhat wider because we have all these stormwater structures which are shared by both of the common owners of this driveway. So we are looking for some guidance on how wide to make the easement. It could be twenty feet wide, it can be whatever, thirty feet wide. And we have to talk about certain limits. We don't want to make it too wide, you know, because we never want it to become a town road, of course. We will, that question comes up when we give these easements out. Bringing up a component. That was one item we need to clear up if we could. And again, so, yeah, the open land is a tough, tough situation for us. The client is purchasing, unfortunately, well, he has purchased a piece of property with a view shed afforded by a, a location centrally located within the, within the property. And accordingly, we have to get to that central portion of the property itself. And therefore, the open space seemed to be extends around the, the central location. And unfortunately, I could, I could give you probably open space connectivity to about three hundred and fifty degrees around this central location. But because I have to get to that higher location, you know, it's, it's somewhat difficult to give you open space. And the septic system, when we did do the deep test holes, we dug twenty eight holes with the health department and spent two days at it to come up with areas which would meet our requirements. And they were somewhat. We had, we had, we had somewhat of an encroachment problem because the current owner dug up a lot of areas and exposed shale. So we were stuck, again, trying to get to areas where there are where there are suitable septics. We could widen the open space somewhat in, in areas upon your input to where you'd like to have more or wider open space criteria, possibly working with the, the upper pond. But then again, we have to get a road around there for the fire department. It could be for emergency purposes only. Again, this is a sketch plan. We're open to any suggestion from any of yourselves or the consultants. So, yes, I acknowledge that issue.
Yeah, I would just last in terms of the, the open space, mention that I think we have to look at what actual vegetation is still remaining on the site. You are somewhat at a kind of a high point in that area. And to what extent, once the buildings, et cetera, are constructed, you know, are they potentially visible from any sensitive or important visual, you know, viewing places? So that's just, I think, one of the considerations in terms of, you know, what vegetation will be retained relative to those open space areas and, and what, what gets disturbed versus, you know, what even remains.
We'd like to plant, we, again, part of our proposal would be, we always put in pretty substantial planting plans. And again, we're open to any suggestions of what you'd like to see. The only thing I would not want to see is white pines because they basically are, are not very well versed on top of a mountain. We'd be shedding limbs every day. We do have a prevailing wind from the north. But we are willing to put any planting, a very substantial planting plan to satisfy anyone's needs. If you gave me a list of any important locations that we might have to coordinate our application to, we'll give you a, a 3D view analysis of our proposed project from any view shed, any distance you want.
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide some suggestions and the planning board can ultimately decide how they want to proceed.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, thank you, Bonnie. Mr. Scott, do you know approximately the distance from this site to the river? Because for everyone else, surprisingly, when you're up at the top of the site where the house will be, you can see the Hudson and the mountains beyond it. It's a beautiful sight. I know why people would like to be up there.
I don't have that number, it's measured in miles probably, but I will, I could give you that.
It's definitely measured in miles. You're pretty far in from nine G and I can't remember where, how far nine G is at that point because it varies. But it might be visible from the river, but you'd have to be with like big binoculars because you're looking at a panorama from up at the top. To actually see a house that distance, I think would be hard. But I appreciate Bonnie saying what she said because it, I, there will be some points where it will be visible, just not probably to the naked eye per se. You'd need binoculars or something.
Yeah, well, we should, digital analysis, we do an arc distance of, of what you see of, of an arc from a certain location of the whole disturbed area. And also an azimuth differential. So you can sort of get a perspective of what you're looking at. And then we can, we, we can refer, we can provide you actually viewpoints from anywhere you want to, to the board.
The board is familiar with due shot analyses, I assure you, we have to do them fairly frequently for projects that are tall and across, that are on the river or next to a historic site. So, yes, Bonnie?
Yeah, I was just going to add, it's, you know, from, from view from the road, you know, maybe distance from, from the Hudson River. I, I agree with that. I think it's sort of that concern of as you're driving along a public road, seeing a notch. You know, instead of having kind of that nice green background that would soften the appearance of a, you know, a home. But frankly, I think first, the, the first question is simply, is it visible from, you know, a, a public road that carries a, you know, reasonable volume of, of traffic? So, thank you.
Public viewpoint, public view sheds. We also told Mr. Scott that we'd like to do a site walk, but we want to wait till the snow is gone because it's going to be much easier. It's a really steep road. You will need a really good SUV to get up there. So, I mean, the, the way it is now, but if that was steep slip, I should say. Mr. Sotero comments, because there's a lot, going to be a lot here for you.
Well, I have to apologize because I completely let this application slip. And I don't, I'm not quite sure why, but I have not, you know, looked at it yet. So I will do that and I will get some comments out early, early next week. But I do have a couple of things, just listening and looking at the plans. Peter, is this the same piece of property that Paul's owned for years?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then I'm like familiar with it. We did have some issues over the years, as the chairman said, with clearing trees. And I believe he was excavating a pond. So I just want to make sure that was the same, the same property. Do you have on your plans, Peter? Do you have a limit of disturbance lines so that we can kind of check your? I think you said there was like four point nine two acres of disturbance.
Four point two acres.
Oh, four point two.
We used something called an LD line on there, which is limited disturbance.
Okay. And then I assume that for the two lots, this is going to be a common driveway?
Yes.
Okay. How much, just out of curiosity, do you know how much of it's common?
Yes, I do. We have a driveway plan we provided, one second. The common road ends at Station fourteen hundred.
So you're going to have, so you're going to have fourteen hundred feet of common driveway?
Yes. And because we have a loop, we have thirty three hundred total length of road. But the loop is about a thousand feet, about eight hundred foot loop at the end.
Yeah.
So we are looking at from between fourteen hundred and another fourteen hundred, pretty much is our driveway before we go to a loop.
Yeah. I mean, because we always have this, I don't want to call it an issue, but you know, it is an issue, I guess, with common driveways in terms of who is going to be responsible for building it? Is it, is it the, is it the first person who's going to apply for a building like permit? And then how does the second person reimburse the first one? And I know in the past, we haven't had a common driveway in quite a few years. But in the past, what we have done is had, is had the applicant before, before the map was signed, rough in the driveway and at least put a sub base on it up to the point where it's not, not common anymore. But maybe because this is only for two lots, I don't know, maybe we can figure out something else.
One of the things we noticed when we were all reviewing it is that in order to put the driveway in, it's going to need cross access easements. So that solution may make sense. So we don't have to bother with the cross access easements for installation.
If I may interject quickly, the fourteen hundred feet that we're referring to is already built some, to some kind of standard.
Oh, okay, all right.
We, we have to repair it to make it meet your code. This currently does not meet your code. We're proposing plans and we, we do have a joint agreement reached. That's the first thing I required on this project with my client is we have, we will give you a, a signed document between both the current owner and the new owner, especially on who's paying for the road improvements.
Okay.
We, I went through that already.
Do you already have that signed? Because normally we have to approve them.
Yeah, right.
So it may need to be modified.
It's fine. I, I, we, we're open to that. I, I, at the very first moment I stepped on the site, I decided I had to solve a few things. That was one of them.
Okay, so we'll get something out then early next week and I apologize. I don't know how it slipped, but it did.
Don't worry about that, Pete. To be honest with you, we kind of snuck it on because Tad reviewed it and said it was okay to go to the board pretty quickly. So that's all, I'm sure just.
I do have it, I do, you know, I do, I, I do have it on my desk. It's just, whatever. We'll catch up.
I, I should have told, I just should have emailed you to say we've added this sort of at the last moment.
That's all right. Lot of stuff going on.
Stormwater management plan I can give you. I have, you know, this is a sketch plan, but I do have stormwater SWIP. And we can start feeding that to you if you'd like as well.
Yeah, just, I mean, just, you know, make sure everything is submitted through the planning board and then it'll get, then it'll get to me.
The stormwater and SWIP review, Michael, may I speak?
Yes, I was calling on you next anyone.
They bring me to my, my big question, which is you've only applied for subdivision approval of a two lot subdivision. We're looking at plans that have, you know, guest houses and pool houses and houses and, you know, stormwater review. And so the scope of the planning board's review here right now is the two lot subdivision with driveway? Are you asking for us to approve this as a realty subdivision where we're approving the locations of the septics? And now that we know that there's going to be multiple dwelling units? You know, we need to understand whether two, one family homes are permitted, but they do require site plan review. And if it's an accessory apartment, that actually requires a special use permit and has to meet certain dimensional standards. So rather than do this piecemeal, does it make sense for you to come in and apply and let us do site plan and subdivision together? Because once those lot lines are approved, you're going to be stuck with them, even if they don't make sense for site plan later on.
Yeah, I, we're willing to do that. I guess our biggest concern was we need input from your offices and the consultants about the open space. Because, you know, we're driven by a lot of items in terms of designing things. But the only thing we've ever, only we've accomplished so far is locate where the road is, locate where the septics are. And, and again, that open space issue, we'd like to get some input from as soon as we can. And then, then of course, I'd finalize everything else very quickly for you. We have it all in the office.
Okay. I'm going to just recommend that the board hold off on, you know, starting secret review and those other items at this point. Because if you need site plan, you know, we should be doing that all together.
Okay, fine.
But, but certainly get input on the open space.
And Ms. Moss is going to be the one I'm calling on next, who will ultimately have to make the determination, I believe, as to what the guest house is, because we don't normally have guest houses fully done. But we did have one recently for small, I believe, on Cream Street. That was going to be a second, that's a second family home. They applied for it that way because that could be rented out afterwards. They still go through with that proposal. So at any rate, Tad, comments?
Yeah, when we first discussed the, the application as a subdivision, and this was to be a guest house, it didn't ring a bell that it would be a second single family dwelling on a lot that would require site plan. I don't see that it's going to be an accessory apartment because it's detached. So I think it would be a good thing to go through the site plan as we're doing this.
Very good.
Thank you, Tad, any other comments?
No, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the grading, regrading of the driveway and whether or not the, the easement, there's going to need to be an easement for the redistribution of soil in that area. But I think we're going to work through that through the sep, through the SWIP. And I think you said that the change to the driveway was going to be done before the subdivision is signed. Is that, did I hear that right?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the, the making it conform is what will take place, correct.
Will that need an ESC permit now?
No, we're even including those improvements, we're underneath the, the five acres.
So the town has a local erosion and sediment control permit that's needed for work. I, I don't recall the thresholds off the top of my head, but it's much lower than five acres.
Yeah, we have, we have a SWIP already ready for it anyway. So that's, it's, I'm just saying.
He's designed this to a SWIP, so it's going, we might give an ESC permit, but it's like a SWIP, put it that way.
I'm just saying, he shouldn't start the work until he checks with Ms. Moss.
Sure. Very good.
Any other comments, Victoria?
Now, oh, the average density dwelling units. At the, at, the code allows, I can think, point four dwelling units per acre or two point five acres per dwelling unit. And so you should take out the max number allowed under the parent parcel and assign them to the parcels. You can do it based on their size as proposed, or one parcel could retain more dwelling units with the other retaining fewer dwelling. So I just want to make sure you've thought that through and you're assigning that density.
Okay, I'll go with Kathleen then, thank you.
It can help you walk through that, but that's something we require for all subdivisions. So that we have an idea, so if there's a parent parcel that's allowed so much density based on that one DU per two point five acres. I mean, you do have to account for water bodies in there too. Then that's your, the density that can be assigned to one or both parcels. We don't believe that there's going to be a lot of further development here based on the environmental constraints of the site. But it's what we require nonetheless, because of course, one day, who knows, there might be some central septic over there where you can get rid of your sewer and septic fields and put in something else. So.
Yes, okay.
I see Peter not going, no, but Pete, you never know a hundred years from now what modern technology may.
You're right, you're right.
Go back and there'll be a file that says how much average, I mean, how much density they're left to have. So it's just a good thing to do. Thank you, Victoria. So in another surprise, let me start with Mr. Oliver tonight. Chris, any comments?
Yeah, so I was actually taking a look on satellite map just to kind of see what, what's been cleared and, you know, what the site looks like. So everybody should know there, there is a, talking about view sheds, there is a large tower to the, I think to the east. And it, it looks like most of the area. And it, it looks like most of the area that we're talking about is already cleared. So I don't, I don't know if there's really going to be any negative impacts from kind of making this better, so it's just something to think about. But other, other than that, I would like to see what the fire department has to say about the grades on the, on the driveway and the access, but that, that's, those are my comments.
Thank you, Chris, those are good comments, and thank you for doing a little research, because yes, Ms. Wasser actually drove up there and went on the road that accesses the cell tower that's up there, which looks actually down on this site, so because it was snowed and she couldn't see it, but she took the same initiative, which will lead me to Ms. Wasser comments.
Well, I, I think Chris made some good comments, I agree with them. And it's early, we're in early days here, there's, there's a lot, lot of question marks that need to be worked out. But one of the things, I know it's a flag light, but one of the things I'm having trouble with, I would like to see a detail of the lot frontage for that 25-foot frontage for the 1B. I don't see it coming all the way down. I looked at the plan a number of times and it just might be the scale or whatever, but I wonder if you can just blow that up a little bit into a detail so I can see this, so we can more easily see that 1B has the legal frontage.
Sure, I will put a separate drawing together defining all the lines for the subdivision. The surveyor has already put it together for us, I'll just give you his survey at this point in time.
Okay, good, thank you.
It looks like you had a bold line in that you stopped.
Exactly.
The boldness before the frontage.
It, it makes it, it just, it might be just so, so much going on there, we'll take care of it.
I think it's a cat layer that, that wasn't carried over, to be honest with you.
Right, but that's my only additional comment at this early stage.
You guys want to weigh in on, on open space? Or you want to reserve judgment till later?
Well, I, I tend to agree with Chris, just in terms of the open, you know, I don't, I think it's going to be an improvement. And I, I'd like to see us, you know, see a solution worked out and not penalize developer for, you know, something that was already denuded.
And I, I need to confess that the area that is in the open space along the north or north and west, that, that proceeds down rather steeply, but that is where, that's probably the most valuable area left on the land to preserve, and they have done that, because that's where all the trees are. Everything else is pretty much the Saudi Arabian desert, so.
So why subdivide, why not just keep it all as one lot if they're going to just keep it protected?
Currently, the, the 8.5-acre lot we're, we're proposing is already developed with a house and a driveway. But he has 28.5 acres, so my client is electing to purchase the property of 28.5 acres, cut off his existing house and, and all these little weird buildings, improve the driveway to meet your code, and then add on to that with our new projects where we're going to be developing the, about 20 acres of land and also putting extensive plantings in there and improving what we have on the site.
Okay, so it's part of a financial decision.
Yes, my client has no interest in purchasing, then we'd have three houses on one lot.
I also, the current owner may want to, may want to keep living there as well, because he's the one who's offering it for sale, so. But a good question.
Yeah.
Anything else, Stephanie?
No, that's it, thanks.
Pick it, comments?
No questions or comments at this time.
Wiser?
So I wasn't sure, were you, were, did you, were you implying that it's possible or impossible to make the open spaces contiguous?
It would be impossible, only the fact that where we're trying to arrive to, we are using areas which are previously disturbed. The slopes are adequate for arriving at the peak of the property. And accordingly, we have to go through, we have to, we have to divide or cut through the, the land areas to get to that mound, and therefore we can't make it one big piece.
Okay.
And I'll give you a better plan, I'll show you a constraint map.
Okay.
Discussion where I break out all those various components and we can all talk about it and, and show you what, the good, the bad, and, and the other of what we have.
The ugly.
Yes.
And then this is just a question from Michael or Tad, do we know if this is in the scenic overlay?
It's not.
Okay, that's all, great.
I, I did look at that, I did look at that.
Okay, so that's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Dexter?
Um, so this is like in my neighborhood, and when I drive to the end of my road, which is South Cross Road, and I look up, I see two towers, and there's a house due west of the existing house on this property that you can see a very big, they have, they have a beautiful view shed, they have a big grand house and they are looking over the river. So there's a lot of activity up there, so I don't think this is going to, you look up there, it's a very busy area, those two towers, they sit there and they flash and they're big and, yeah, I don't think, I don't think some, like some, a well-developed lot is going to detract. And as far as the open space, I mean, I'm looking, I pulled up parcel access and I'm looking at the contour map. And, you know, they've basically left alone all the steep slopes, but also on the backside into the south, it's like, I don't know, I don't know how anybody would ever build there. I'm not sure it's important that it's contiguous, because it's, there's so, there's actually a, a wealth of what appears to be open space.
I, I tend to agree with you, Anne, but I, it's my job to make sure that we.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, bring it up, and because it, the other thing about the open space is it's not just supposed to prevent development, but as Bonnie said, it's supposed to protect important resources and.
Right, it's supposed to be.
For movement of animals.
Right, it's supposed to have corridors and stuff, but I think there's corridors here that are going to, again, I mean, we can't look into the future 100 years and who knows what we'll be doing then, but it looks like it would satisfy.
Thank you for saying that, because the other, as I said, the other purpose is movement of animals. And up that high, you're not going to have actually a lot of animals moving about exposed, because there's no trees, et cetera. You and I have did the biodiversity assessment, so we know a lot of this. Upland habitat is only preferred when there's trees. And these are mostly gone, so, thank you, anything else?
No.
Ms. Napoli?
Yes, my first comment is how envious I am that they're going to have a guest cottage that is in the heart of everyone who has a lot of company, so I'm envious of them. My other question, my question is really, the pool house you said is not going to be a living quarter area. How do we know, I mean, what's included besides, I would assume a bathroom?
Yeah, we have this problem often, and what, what it is, is an open room with no wall, interior walls, but there is well, one area room which houses a mechanical equipment and adjacent to that would be a a bathroom, and there's nothing else in it. So there's no privacy created by this envelope of a building.
Thank you. In, in terms of the open space, I'll echo what my colleagues have said. It, it does look like a true challenge.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone's had an opportunity to weigh in. So basically, for once, you've all covered my comments. I don't, going last, I don't have anything else new to add except for one question for Ms. Moss. Ted, this would be a private road, does this need to be named for 911 purposes, that means?
I think it does, I think anytime three dwellings are accessed through a common drive, I think it requires a, a private road name.
That's why, and Peter's not, Pete's nodding too, I'm pretty sure that's the rule. So, well, you have to think of some clever name for your private drive, because with Tad sort of opining, the guest house is a second single-family home, that means there's now a total of three up there, so, or three on the two lots. So it will require that for 9/11. Otherwise, I don't have much comment, except to say that I appreciate my colleagues weighing in on the idea of the open space. Again, as I said, a lot of it is kind of degraded in terms of what we try to value the open space for. And the area that I thought was most important to preserve is proposed to be preserved. The rest is more or less a requirement of the code that they have up to 30 or 30% or even more. Other issue is, yes, you will need to decide to, from what I heard, you'll need to assign the density again, so that sometime in the future, if someone can develop it further, they would know what the number of houses or allowed are. That's in the subdivision section for how you calculate the total density allowed. I appreciate that, I'd love to use sometimes these kinds of plans as a learning lesson, because I think I was in my fourth year on the board, or maybe third, when I discovered that in WD did not just mean Nassau Cardigan complex, it meant that there was a D slope to it. So once I figured that out, I was like, oh, you know, you can look at both the contours and the label on the soil maps to understand what that means. And you, you thoughtfully did that for us. I think Pete is going to have a lot of work to do, looking at the grading and how stormwater is managed on this, as well as Tad. But they're of course up to the, up to the proposal, so. What we'll do is, I'll just wait and we can, I think we need to placeholder you, just wait until you meet and discuss with Ms. Moss about what other application forms are necessary and then we can get this thing going. So, okay, Mr. Scott? That's if Ms. Moss is, is available, she's got a tight schedule too. That noted, I believe that Mr. Scott's sort of signaling that his clients would like to be up there in that guest house as soon as possible. And which, as I said, after looking at the view shed, I thought, whoa, so would I. I mean, you don't get a lot of places in town that have those kinds of views. Ms. Wasser actually has a gorgeous property that also has similar, but she's much closer to wherever, she loves, lives off Route 9, this is, I said, pretty. And do you know what the distance is of South Cross from 9 to 9G, by chance? No?
Two miles.
Two miles? So this is likely.
My house is one mile in, one mile that way.
Because I thought you were at the center, so this is probably five or six miles in from the river.
No, 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 no.
I mean, it's more like three, I'm one mile back.
Sorry, at the bottom of my road is Anderson School, which is maybe quarter mile.
Okay, so it's not that far, and that's why it has such great views, okay. Nice to hear, interesting, so maybe it is visible, Bonnie, you're right, maybe it is visible from the river and across.
Yeah. And, and again, I think my concern is just more simply the main house itself. There's, there's very little vegetation on this property, as we all know, because of what's been graded out. But there is this little hill look that's on the top of the property, which has some remaining vegetation, which is wedged between the two ponds, and that's where the main house would go. So, you know, I think just some consideration of, again, it's the notch concept. And as much as I know that there's telecommunication facilities, et cetera, kind of not necessarily potentially adding to it. One, sorry, as I'm looking at this, one final question I forgot to ask. The guest house itself appears to have four, is it going to be a four garage, four car garage, and then above is going to be the living space?
Yes, it's a, it's a parking under type of.
Okay.
And in that will be tractors and maintenance equipment for the property when it's all done.
Michael? It's three, 3.12 miles.
Oh, thank you, Chris. A young and technologically adept, thank you, Chris.
I guess, I estimated three miles.
Good estimate. For some reason, I thought it was a lot farther, but I'm not very good with distance measurement, particularly without, I don't have something to scale out. So there are four parking spaces associated with it, but the garage down below will actually store equipment. Right, Mr. Scott?
Yes, it is, yes, that's what it's for.
So just so you know, that when you go through site plan, we will need to see elevations for the house, the house, the guest house, all of it, I apologize, because we don't require that or subdivision, but we will as part of site plan. And I'm guessing this is going to be a pretty cool place, and I want to make sure you go back to your customers and tell them that Hyde Park welcomes them. We'd like to see improvements on property and we'll love having them become neighbors.
Very good, thank you very much.
Sure, so as soon as you are ready to resubmit, then we'll schedule, schedule you on. Just make sure you send it to Ms. Whitman, who will forward it to everybody else, and Tad, good luck on this. There's still some more work to do, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Scott, stay safe until we see you again.
Thank you very much now, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Oh, we were going to type this action, I'm sorry, before we go.
Right.
Right. Should we still, should we still do this?
I'm doing that.
We should wait, what am I saying, we should wait because we need to do site plan as well. Okay, thank you, Mr. Scott, we'll see you in a bit. Next item on the agenda is Bellafield wastewater treatment facility lot line alteration. This is both, well, and we also have at the same time, the Bellafield wastewater treatment facility expansion. To summarize as briefly as I can, the applicants are seeking approval to enlarge the original lot that we did for the wastewater treatment facility. And they're also looking to get site plan approval in order to install all the tanks, also known as trains, that would be underground, so that actually they would be able to, once the wastewater treatment facility is fully installed, they wouldn't have to keep going back to the DEC, Department of Health, for speedies permits over and over again, as each time there's a new client and new expansion. So they're proposing, as though the entire site is fully built, this would be installed. Larry, let me turn it over to you, welcome back, Mr. Boudreaux.
Yes, thank you, everybody, great forum here, nice to see everybody again. Pleasure to be back in front of you, yes, you, you said it right. I, I wanted to start off by going through that history a little bit more, so everybody understands the, the context, and then I'm going to give you a quick update of where we are at with DOH and DEC. And then I'm going to go through, I'm going to hit some the major comments, you know, big, big broad stroke at it, and then of course open it up to comments. But we, we approached the DOH about a year ago, asking them if they would consider upping the flow confirmation letter from just the flow for the hotel, which was at 21,500 gallons a day, to the full build-out. Previously, they said no, they restricted us to the demand. So in other words, when Tom came in with another tenant and we had the, you know, another need for 20,000, then we'd have to go through the whole process. And as you know, that's about a six-month process. So every time, you know, the, it just, from a scalable standpoint, to get tenants online and that kind of thing, it just, it just would be very difficult. So they listened to our argument and they agreed. And we presented the, the engineering reports to them, and we received an updated flow confirmation letter from them February 3, 2021. So that, you know, I, as soon as I had that in my hand, I called Tom and I said, boy, this is a big benchmark for us, and then we all celebrated over the phone. And it is, because now with that flow confirmation letter for the entire build-out of the plant, which is 340, 2,000 gallons a day, we're preparing the application to go back into DEC to amend the speedies permit. Now, what we're doing is amending the speedies permit, we're not getting a new one, we have one in place. So it's, it's, it, it should take us half the time to amend the speedies permit. That's going to go in the end of this week. Tom signed all the documents for us, we received them yesterday, and we'll, and we'll get that in. Simultaneously, we are working on the, the full plant design, much more complicated, of course, and that'll probably go into DOH within, within the next month. The, I'm gonna share my screen here, let's see if I can get this to work. If not, Neil, I'll jump over to you. Is that sharing by any chance?
Nope. I can see.
Okay, I got it, hold on, let's see. Now you see it.
Yes.
Okay, so there are, for the subdivision, we have three drawings that we submitted. This is the same subdivision plat that we submitted for the hotel. And of course, the hotel is Lot 2 over here on the right. The entire parcel is Lot 1, of course, and Lot 3 is the wastewater treatment plant. And ECorp set up, TR Sewer Works for that. And so the idea, as you all may know, is sewer goes from the. And so the idea, as you all may know, is sewer goes from the hotel to a pump station and then a force main all the way up to the plant. To date, the pump station is on site. It'll be installed in the spring. The wet well is in, the gravity line is in, the entire force main is in all the way up to the plant. The plant itself, it has the, what's called the headworks on it, which is three, three very underground tanks and a screening building as well. Now, back when we got this approved, and I'm going to zoom in, actually, I'll just go to plan here. This plan, second sheet in the subdivision plat is the hotel. The third sheet is the wastewater treatment plant, which is this parcel here. When we originally got it approved, it was this rectangle here, it had an acreage of point five eight. It fit the entire full build out of the plant. What it did not include was the, the, how we handle the, the septic. Because at some point, you can't haul it off, the waste, you want to manage it on site. So with the, with knowing we were going to get the updated flow confirmation letter, we relooked at the plant and there were some things that, that we wanted to change. One of those was the lab building. It, we felt would be more efficient by moving it actually over onto this property line and then get, get the other facilities in there. And I'll go through that in detail on the site plan. But the bottom line here is the, the area that we previously defined for the wastewater treatment plant needed to go to the east. So straight up is to the east to accommodate the new location of the, of the lab building. While, again, looking at the big picture of this, Tom wanted, I mean, he asked the question, what if we want to expand, you know, the facility? We should consider taking an envelope or an area that, that would handle that expansion. And we determined that the maximum expansion would be, if it ever happened, would be twice the plant size. So we would basically flip the plant here over to here. And then that defined the parcel line. So we go from point five eight to one point five two acres, and that's what this parcel is here. What's not on here, I'll move over here a little bit more. What's not on here are, which came up in the comments and very good comments, the groundwater is an issue out there. And we installed a drainage pipe to get that water out. And it comes down to about here. So we have that as built. That needs to show up on this plat, and there needs to be an easement on it because it goes outside the lot line, of course. So that will, will show up when we submit next. The other thing is when we graded in the lab building, grade had, had to come off of the, off of the parcel. And, and, you know, so what do you do with that, right? So do you either expand the, the parcel area or do a grading easement? And I'll, I'll speak to Tom about it. But I think the best way is just do a grading easement for, for that area as well. So, so when we resubmit this thing, it'll have the easement for the drainage line going out, taking the groundwater out and the grading easement up here. And then we'll also show, there is a piece of this easement that has been revised. And we'll, and we'll show how that easement will be, will be extinguished, that, that section of it. So going back to the big picture here, so you can see, again, from a subdivision plat standpoint, we're limited to this area. Nothing else changes along here. All these easements are holding. And we'll add this and add the grading easement up here, and of course, the parcel size. That's the subdivision plat, so I can open it up for some questions.
So before I turn it over to our consultants, I just want to first add that Mr. Boudreaux, Bridget Barkley of DCWWA, Jason Teed of Department of Health, me, and I think there was your, one of your engineers, Chris Laporta, who's longer with this Chase and office, and then engineer Pierre, I'm forgetting his last name. At any rate, Chris, we all met by Zoom to discuss, because when Mr. Teed was contacted Department of Health about providing the new flow confirmation letter, initially balked because he had heard, sort of through the grapevine, that there was going to be a new concept plan submitted. And Mr. Boudreaux made the correct point that they were, they still haven't approved concept plan. And so they were proceeding with these changes based on the approved concept plan. And after much discussion, it was decided that what Mr. Boudreaux should do is just show the gallons per day of the new concept plan, even though it hasn't been fully submitted to the town yet. We've only had, you know, sort of informal meetings about it. And I believe it may, has, it has not been formally submitted, but we now have new document, documentation that we'll be receiving. At any rate, Mr. Boudreaux was able to show that the changes that are proposed from the approved concept plan to the one that's going to be proposed to replace it, actually, it's about the same number of gallons per day. So that's what gave Mr. Teed the confidence level to issue the new confirmation letter. And if you're wondering how that happened, there's basically less commercial and more residential. And the commercial, that's the reduction, they, they kind of met each other halfway, we'll put it that way. So that's a little bit of background there. Otherwise, I want to thank Bonnie and Pete for giving very detailed early memos on this. When I looked at the plans, I realized that a lot of this is going to be technical in terms of what sort of issues are arising. But Larry, just one thing quickly, because this is site plan, I think we do need to see the elevations for the structures that cover tanks, et cetera. And I don't believe those are submitted. Maybe they were, but I didn't see them.
No, 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 I need, I need to do that.
And I talked to Mr. Malroy, the site owner and applicant, just a couple of days ago, who I said, I know they're going to look nice because you have too many high promontories that will look down on this area. So I'm sure you're not going to have something ugly and industrial. He said, absolutely not. It's got to stay with the theme. So at any rate, we look forward to seeing those. Bonnie, let me turn this over. Actually, Peter, let me turn it over to you first. There's, there's Tom. Hey, Tom.
Yes, I was just confirming. Yes.
Sarah?
Okay, sure. I'll just go through a couple of comments. Larry had mentioned about the underdrain that they had to put in for the, the first set of tanks. So he's going to show that. And then if there's any, I assume there'll be a need for an underdrain for the expanded area. So that'll have to be, you know, shown. And I assume it could tie into the same underdrain, but that's something you'll have to look at.
Right, okay.
So. The other thing is, it looked like there was just like a one-page amended Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan summary that just showed that there wasn't any increase in flow. And it just asked for the backup.
I saw that. We'll, we'll get that to you. I spoke to Kyle about it, so he'll.
Okay.
He's on it.
And then, you know, you, you had, you had already explained about the potential for an expansion area. I think, I think it's probably good, you know, planning at this point to make the, make the lot a little, you know, larger. I mean, who knows what's going to happen, you know, ten years, fifteen, twenty years down, you know, the road. So the, I guess the last thing was, I think you stated that the stormwater ponds wouldn't have to be, like, enlarged, the, the ones that are out there. But it did appear that there was some proposed grading shown there. So I didn't, I wasn't sure quite what was up with that. And whether, you know, the contours shown in that area are, you know, as-built existing contours or they're original.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that that's hard. I know that's hard to do.
Yeah, that question came up a couple of times. Those contours are the design contours.
Yeah.
And, you know, the idea is it's not a, you know, a big change here. So we were using that. And then, you know, as the plants and the trains go in, well, as-built it as it goes.
All right. Well, maybe you can, maybe we can just talk and we can clarify, you know, the grading and, you know, and all that. It's not, it's not that big of a deal. So.
Yeah. And to your other point, yeah, I already, I already sent that over to Kyle. So his response is that the, the stormwater practices were larger than they needed to be.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll just need, you know, the backup.
Yeah.
Backup for it, that's all. And then, you know, I think on the erosion control plan, I think I made a comment about maybe having some phasing notes to make sure that the diversion swell that's around, you know, the back is installed, you know, right up in front. And I think that was about-
No, no, that makes sense.
I think that was about it. And I think that Bonnie's going to cover some of the stuff about the turtles. So that was it for us. We'll work together, as always.
Yep, yep.
Pete, Ms. Fransson?
Yeah, so I had sort of general application comments. Many of them are on the site plan, so I'll hold off on those. Specific to this lot line alteration plan. And it, I don't know that it's so important for the subdivision plan, but for the site plan, I do think there needs to be a discussion about this as-built and what is shown as existing versus what's already been installed. But again, I think that's especially important for the site plan. I just had a couple of minor typos that I picked up on. I think the one area in particular was, in addition to that drain easement, you were also showing the sanitary sewer easement number two for the sewer outfall. When you enlarge that lot, it's going to change, I think, the easement area. So our planning board attorney will need to review that easement language and show kind of the change in the, in the easement itself. Because now a portion of that easement area will be within the new lot.
Yeah, yeah. And the easement goes away there. Right.
Right. And then, just again, minor, but if I'm looking at the subdivision plan in the corner, you do have two of the lots noted as far as their acreage. It may be useful to have the hotel acreage provided there because when you look at the acreages and then look at the total site acreage, they don't add up. But it's because the hotel lot is also a portion of the subdivision. So all the way on the right-hand corner, bottom, those acreages versus areas, it just might be useful, right, to note total project acreage, maybe in parentheses, also includes Lot Two, just of clarification.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Ms. Paudaro?
I think you're muted, Victoria.
Hi. Thank you. I just wanted to go over SEACER for a quick overview of where we are in the process. The, the town completed SEACER on the full build out of the project many moons ago. And when the applicant came back in for sub-phase one A, the site plan only included that portion of the wastewater treatment plant attributable to the hotel. And so this is basically an amendment to that site plan. But instead of just building out a small portion of the wastewater treatment plant, you know, they're going to be building out the, the full wastewater treatment plant. And so as long as this is consistent with what the board has already reviewed, there shouldn't be any significant secret impacts. So we just need to identify any changes between, you know, the, the big SEACER review and, and this change. So I don't think that's going to be an issue. As far as future phases, I did speak with Jennifer Van Tyel earlier today. And we both agreed that the note should be modified. It's fine to plan for the future, but we want to make it clear that any future phases, not part of, you know, the current Bellfield project, would require their own separate site plan and SEACER review. So it's not that it's being approved now. You're just showing us potential. So Jennifer and I will work together on a note, Larry.
Okay, yeah, yeah. She, she let me know. That makes sense.
And then the other thing Jennifer and I spoke about was the list of easements. You have it on one of these sheets, but it's not clear which ones have been recorded and which ones will be modified and which ones are new. So she's going to help you flesh that out. So for existing easements that have been recorded and are not changing, give us that information. For easements that need to be modified, you know, let us know. And then new easements, such as this underdrain, those should be identified as well.
Okay. Got it.
Great comments, Victoria. Anything else?
That's it for right now.
Thank you. Ms. Moss's comments?
I, I had done a fair review and given my comments to Bonnie and Pete and the board. I, too, am interested in the contours of the existing stormwater facility and whether or not that forebay is actually constructed. I don't, last time I was out there, I don't think it was around the Sycamore Tree. Does this in any way impact the MOU with the town and Dutchess County Water and Wastewater? I know that there's an overall agreement as to where locations of things are. And I, I guess when Jennifer reviews that, where the easements are and how they're impacted, I'm guessing that that will show up there.
I, I don't think there's, there's any issue with the MOU.
So I think, you know, the site plan is probably where the majority of comments are going to come from. For me.
Yeah, I have, I have those comments, Tad. They're, they're very good, very technical. Like Michael says, you're, you know, you're stormwater, so there's a lot of that in there. And we'll just have to get through it.
Yep.
Okay, so board members, do you want me to ask you for comments on the subdivision? Or do you want to wait till we get to the next portion of this, the site plan?
We can wait.
We can wait.
I agree. Okay. Larry, it's back to you.
Okay, so we go back, we go to the site plan?
Yes.
All right. Give me a minute here.
Alex, go.
Where are we going?
Yeah, well, hey, hey, look, just, just since it's up here, that is the Freedom Tower right there. If you can see that, but right there.
Al?
I was flying to Atlanta and snapped a shot. I'll go right here to the site plan and go through some of the comments. So one of the comments was, I believe that was with you, Ted, five hundred-foot buffer. We will show that. The DOH will want that shown on the plan. The two, the two fifty, that's, that's essentially fixed. The five hundred, as long as you do mitigation for, for odor, then, then we can go back down to the two fifty. But I will show the, the five hundred on there.
Excuse me, Larry, could you just zoom, zoom that picture up a little bit?
You want me to zoom in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, um, I'm going to go through these, uh, the ones I picked out. Um, the seven parking spaces, that came up several times. Um, I'm not sure why it's there. I need to correct that. DEC requires, uh, one staff, four hours a day. Uh, so we'll, um, we'll have a parking space for, for one staff. Uh, we'll probably put two. The, um, the core, so that question came up. We are in the middle of, um, e- e- extending that core permit out another five years. We, we went, um, to Brian Roselle last fall and said, look, we know this is coming up. We want to be proactive. We want to do it now. He said, don't worry about it. Come back in March. Um, and, 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 and give me the application. We'll, we'll take care of it, um, then. So that is correct. It, uh, it is coming up and, uh, we need to, um, get it, uh, updated. Uh, the open space, that was a good question. Uh, the expansion of this lot area does not go to the open space. We submitted, uh, quite a bit of, uh, work, uh, through Jennifer, um, uh, earlier this week and you'll see the open space diagram in there. We did locate the wastewater treatment plant. Um, but it's, 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 uh, essentially down by the Marichi Kill, which is further, further, uh, uh, down here. So the open space area is down, down through here. This expansion does not get into that.
Hey Larry, could you, could you just say, uh, explain to the planning board what the belt press building is?
Yeah, I can get into that. So the idea here is, um, again, I'm just gonna kind of give context here. These grade out buildings here, these tanks are in the ground. Um, this one here has a screen building. The screen building is used to screen out debris that makes it, it's sewer. Um, here's the belt press here. There are a couple of ways to, to, to deal with, um, with, uh, waste that, you know, septic waste. And initially on the first train, we were going to haul it off. But then after that, it gets too expensive to do. So then that's, you can either do a greenhouse where you let the, um, the solids kind of, uh, bake in there over a period of time or you can use a belt press. The belt press is a, um, is a smaller, more efficient building. We decided to go that way because there's a buffer off of it. This 250 buffers off the belt press. The way it works is it, um, not getting too technical, uh, the end product is goes through a conveyor belt and into a 10-yard container. That container will be within this building here and the trucks will come up, swing up into here. That's why this is here and they'll back in here. That container gets rolled out and picks it up. And then they'll, they'll swing it up and, and go, and go out. Um, I think what I will do is show you a, a truck template so you can see the radius of, of why this is the shape it is. But it's real efficient, uh, it's enclosed. Um, and, uh, you know, plenty of setback. Setback here. Initially, when we're dealing with the, um, septic, uh, the belt press won't be there because it only will come online on the second phase or train. So on the first train, when this goes in, we'll deal with the septic by coming in here. And the standard septic trucks will come down here and, and pull the septic out of here. Uh, and then swing over. So we checked all the races for the truck turnings on septic trucks and, um, 10-yard dumpster truck. So we'll show all, all that to you. In the previous plan, the lab building, which is now here, was here. So we moved it to here. And along with that, uh, will come the, um, uh, T transformer, uh, and then the, uh, gen set, which, which will be here. Uh, by the time you grade it all in, um, we, and get this, you know, for future turning raises, that's why this, um, lot line pushed out from here. You can kind of see the, um, bear with me one second. Kind of see the light line here, which is the original property, or current property line goes from here.
Sorry, he's terribly dull.
What's that? Um, so just going through a few more of these comments here. Pete, um, you made a comment regarding the underground tanks. That was and still is the goal here. It's much more efficient to put all these tanks in at once, these six right here.
Yep.
Um, that's a, that's a, uh, that's a dollar thing too. So, uh, financing would all have to be in place, uh, to, to do that. I don't believe we'd want to commit to putting all six in at once if it works out. Um, financially and we're able to do it, it, it is the right way to do it. Ted had some comments, good comments on, all right, when you pull all this dirt out, we know the quality of it. Where's it going to go? How are you going to manage it? And so we'll, we will show that. And that's really, um, that's really it. So I can open it up for some questions.
Michael, you're muted. You've been muted.
Sorry, I looked up belt press building when we first got this. It's another way to de-water liquid sludge, so to speak, and it produces what's called cake when it's done. That's, I read the EPA, I read, I read the EPA thing. I read the EPA manual. That's, that's what they call it politely is cake. It isn't like birthday cake to me, however.
Yeah.
But.
You know, that's one thing you don't put candles on.
Soil that green are the people, soil that green are the people. At any rate, um, it's a quieter process than what's used. So actually this is very constant with what they're proposing. I also just wanted to point out for everyone's edification that, uh, and Larry will remember this because I had to accompany the applicant's consultants to the DEC because they were being a little bit murky in their response. But the area of the expansion, I believe, is includes what's called secondary habitat or roving habitat for the Blenning's turtles. It's not primary. Um, but we want to make sure that when we get this done, that, um, that, that entire construction area still has what's laughingly known as the appropriate turtle fencing because again, it's just secondary habitat. That's all.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It, it, it's on here. Um, but we are doing a follow-up with that.
And Mr. Sotero comments?
No, I pre, I pretty much went over mine, uh, in the prior one.
Um, so, and I think this was, um, raised by Victoria, but we also noted that somehow the site plan amendment sheets need to be coordinated with the overall site plan for subphase one A and ensure that they're all consistent with one another. Um, also note that, um, there was a site plan amendment set approved back, I think in January 15th, 2020. And I'm not sure what the status is or if you had already signed that, um, Michael, and if that's filed. Because I don't know how that might relate to these amendments and do we sort of have another uh, set of plans that are sitting out there that these have to be coordinated with? So just to kind of know where we are in the overall process.
Larry, can you correct me if I, if I'm wrong, but was that for the changes to the hotel site plan? The relocate? That's my thought. So Bonnie, those were all, uh, involving changes to some of, some, uh, there was a change to, I believe, some utilities that were outside. Um, they, they lost.
Dumpster, uh, area, yeah.
Stormwater management areas. They, they lost an indoor pool, but added some hotel rooms. So that was all strictly to the right-hand side of the site plan. But it's a, it's a great comment. It's a great comment.
Yeah.
Um, both on the application on the site plan, um, Larry, just note that, um, you need to refer to the TR Sewage Works Corporation as far as ownership of that, um, particular lot, um, that's being expanded.
Okay.
Um, you touched upon already the comment about the seven parking spaces. Um, Victoria touched upon seeker. Um, just again, I'm going through my general comments. Public hearing will be needed for both the lot line alteration and for, uh, the amended site plan. I'd indicated some, um, agencies that this will likely be referred to. Um, Army Corps you touched upon, you touched upon open space, uh, site plan comments. We talked about the lot owner. Um, is a fence generally required for the WWTP? Um, again, because I didn't look at the overall site plan. I don't know if that detail is already there and because you're going to be, okay, and because you're going to be spanning that lot.
Yeah, we're going to have a gate and everything is locked, you know, everything's locked.
And, um, you know, want to make sure whatever lights have been installed or whatever lights will be installed, um, are provided on the plan. Um, if they're not already on the original site plan. Uh, and this kind of gets again to the as-built, um, because we've seen, for instance, two sheets, um, that show around the belt press building, uh, two different, uh, topographic lines. So, you know, I, I think it's a matter of, you know, ensuring that whatever's being reviewed is, is up to date, right? So you could see there that, that appears to be
What, what is, oh, 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 okay. This is the design.
Okay.
Grading that was approved previously.
Okay.
And that's the way it's built.
It is built.
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, this is proposed.
Okay. So if you go to the prior sheet that we were on, right, you can see how that looks like that's the older survey because it's not showing, right?
Correct.
So we just need to make sure that they're consistent.
Okay.
Um,
Got it.
To, um, a point made earlier, we also questioned in, for purposes of identifying the limits of disturbance, what's actually, again, been constructed out there and specifically with regard to the stormwater basins? Because there is some drainage coming off of this site that will go off the lot. Um, so we want to make sure that that's known. We talked about the turtle restrictive fencing. Um, in terms of details, you did have some tree protection details, but it'd be useful to say what trees are being protected specifically. Um, we had some notes about, um, correcting a label that appeared on a plant list. Um, and then we had just some general seeker comments on the EAF itself, which you can, um, take a look at. But in particular, we just want to make sure that when you did your, uh, your SHPO review of, you know, prior subphases that it included the area, uh, within which you're doing, you know, any additional disturbances.
Yeah, it, um, it, 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 it will. It's going out this week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Victoria?
I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you. And Ted?
Um, when we do site plan, we need elevations of what the buildings look like. Um, so certainly the belt press building, probably the lab building and is, is the structure that's there over the first train? I forget what you called that building. Is.
Spring building.
It, is that going to remain? Is it going to be replaced? Is it, what's happening with that?
It, it, it remains, but the color will change.
Well, there was a note somewhere that the existing something was going to be removed. Um, I don't.
I, I think that's referring to the lab building.
And is the lab building on the property now?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, colleagues, let me start with, uh, Ms. Weiser.
Um, I don't have the additional questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wasser?
Um, well, I'm glad Ted mentioned the elevations because I was trying to understand, I wasn't on the board when this was initially approved. So I'm just trying to absorb, uh, a lot of it. Um, and, and I'm just wondering about the visual buffering. Larry mentioned a 250-foot radius buffer. I wasn't sure if that was noise, visual odor.
Yeah, it's odor. I'm sorry, odor.
Okay. And, um, you need that much of a buffer? Some people smell it on Route nine.
But why now?
Well, the odor, that 250-foot buffer, I can't see where that dotted line goes, goes into, does it go into Route nine?
Yes, it does.
Oh, there's nothing that can be done to contain that?
Well, uh, this, what was very good containing odor is vegetation, you know, any kind. Um, and this is all undisturbed.
Okay. And I know, I noticed the topography goes down, it slopes down.
Well, this goes up. This, this.
No, but slopes down as you, the perspective from Route nine to
Yes.
Belt press. It, it sits lower. You can't really see it, but I did notice you don't have much, I don't know how much you will see of it. That's why I was interested in the, um, elevations because there's only three deciduous trees, you know, from the Route nine perspective. I just don't have a sense of what you're going to see and what you're not going to see. And then there's some blue spruce, uh, three blue spruces, I think I saw some other things. So that, that, that's the only thing I'm really commenting on at the moment on the site plan piece.
Okay.
Thank you, Stephanie. Mr. Pickett?
Uh, yes, Laurie, during the various phases of the septic, uh, build up where there'd be good access for the fire department for entry, exit, et cetera.
Um, so the access would be on this drive here, up and through here and either down through here. I believe this is, gosh, I don't know, I remember the dimension here. But certainly right, right through here. This guy here, I believe, is 22 feet right here.
Okay. To make sure that they have, they, they have a turnaround area as well. Um, they can back up, it appears to, but they may want to turn around. We'll see.
Okay.
That's my only question.
That's a good, that's my first thing was, I, I underlined it. It's a good question. So, thank you, Brent. Um, Ms. Dexter?
Um, I'm very thankful that we have such a great technical team because so much of this is like, wow. Um, so very happy that, um, we have our consultants. And again, this is great news, right, that we're, we're doubling this. So excellent. Glad to hear. No other comments.
Thank you, Anne. Mr. Oliver?
Uh, I'd like to congratulate the applicant on getting the, uh, go ahead from DOH. And I, I think from a planning perspective, you know, this really makes a lot of sense to look at this, uh, sewage treatment planet from a holistic approach. And, you know, really kind of see everything at this stage rather than, you know, uh, piecemeal throughout the build out of the project. So I appreciate that and no further comment. Thank you.
Great comment as well, Chris. Thank you. Ms. Denapoli?
No questions, no comments at this time.
Thank you. So, um, I do want to just point out that there was a little bit of a concern at some point by DCWWA. Um, they were worried that they might, if somehow the project, let's just say the economy tanks and the craters, they were worried that they might have to, you know, handle and own and maintain a facility that doesn't really have a lot of users, but that's built out for others. But I believe those fears were allayed uh, in all the discussions that, the endless discussions that Larry was, went through a Department of Health and DCWWA. I also, I want to echo all my comments, colleagues' comments that this does make sense because I really, if you, if, if, once the, uh, approved concept plan is reviewed, uh, maybe tinkered with, but approved, assuming it is approved, then Mr. Moore will be free, really, if this is ongoing and fully built, then he'll be free to, you know, sort of gobble up his tenants as fast as possible. Um, because they'll already have a sewer and a septic, so it doesn't require referral to DOH, DEC, et cetera, you know. People who've seen me talk to the Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, have heard my rant for years. It's not that it's so hard to develop in Hyde Park because of the planning board, it's because there's a lot of hurdles to jump. We're the largest town without a commercial sewage, almost all their development that's commercial occurs on nine and nine G. When you think about it, that's a lot of either agencies to try to involve and get through. So it makes sense to go through this at one fell swoop. And I appreciate what Tom is doing because I know this is money that you don't get a return on initially, but it will speak the process up later on, so I salute you, Tom. Otherwise.
Thank you.
Most of these, of course, most of these comments really are more technical. We did notice, Larry, that the contours were different under each, and that's why you heard a lot of comments about it. The seven parking spaces that we read really are not required, so you're going to have two because we were like, where can the trucks turn around if they have seven spaces here? I, you'll need to identify those two spaces, I couldn't tell if they were on the road to park or in that backup turnaround area, but just show. Like the striping or something, I assume. I, I'm going to assume that ADA compliant is not required with parking because this is not a public building. That's something for, you know, the building department, I don't know. But that, you might want to just address that with an architect if, if that's possibility. Otherwise, I don't think I have much else to add because as Anne said, we have a great amount of technical expertise. On the board with our consultants and. I don't think I'll say is, I, I think about this a lot when I first applied to join the board along with, um. My long-serving vice chair, Anne Dexter, we both were making, were interested in making the town look better and function better. And I never thought I'd be going down the endless rabbit holes I do of learning about septic systems and stormwater, it's, it's insane. Once I started reading about belt press buildings, I thought, oh, okay, so this is better, this is a more improved system, et cetera. So I like the fact that you're investing in something that I think will provide long-term benefits for that community, the agri-hood. That you're calling it, once it's fully operational and developed, because the way you're, what you're proposing, Tom, I believe. Is going to encourage a lot of people to walk around the site, both visitors and those who live there for the experiences that you're going to be offering, um, through nature, et cetera. And I'm not sure they're going to wander close to this, um, maybe that 250 foot barrier will block that, but. I'm not really sure, I think people will be wandering all over the site at some point. So at any rate, I have no other comments other than. It looks as though we need to have a little bit of a cleanup and then we can get started on circulation. Victoria, I'm not sure how we analyzed secret changes. I paid attention to what you said, you're just saying, is this consistent? I think it is, um, again, the area, new area of development for the lot line alteration will go into secondary habitat. But the only requirement from D E C last time was to erect and maintain the fencing. And again, it's not primary habitat, it's just potential secondary. I know Lennox turtles are actually rather shy. And once there's been a lot of development and sound, they probably won't even be heading down to this area. But it also depends on what their needs are because that, they would be heading down here for the water, as we know. So that's about it. Larry, you want to meeten up stuff and then get back to us and we will get everything going for circulation, et cetera?
Yeah, so it's circulation and then the public hearing?
Yep, I mean, part of it is, is that we need to have a coordination with, really, I guess, Bonnie, Tad and you. Because, uh, we need to make sure that what we're, we're amending as, and Pete said the same thing, is we're amending the original site plans, we need to coordinate how these sheets fit in there. We don't need a full set, but we'll need to have plans with page, pagination that will fit into, I think, the existing signed site plan, is that right, Tad, or would you prefer?
Or, or it just needs to identify what's being changed from the sign, the other sign site plan.
Okay.
Provide a clear path forward for us.
Right.
But I think we're pretty close and we can get this thing started, so, um, that's a matter of, if you need my help in coordinating that meeting, please let me know. I'm not sure I need to be there, but I'm always happy to attend.
Okay, all right, very good.
Anything else from anybody else? Great to see you guys, looking forward to processing this, you heard, I think the board's sort of excited about this too because it's one more step closer. And talk to you soon, stay safe and well.
Yeah.
Very much, good night, everyone.
Yep, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good seeing you.
Have a good night, great seeing you, right, bye.
Next item on the agenda, um, Mr. Will is here representing the applicant, the DOTICS. And we asked for some more information after, uh, well, first, this, this project is located at forty-three oh five Albany Post Road. It basically involves the conversion of an existing building with a gambol roof. Uh, that's right located on Route nine, obviously, that has been an office on the first floor as well as a second, a two-bedroom apartment on the fir, on the top. It's going to be converted into a two-family, uh, building, which is now allowed under our zoning, our new zoning. In addition, the applicants have already, Mr. Will already reached out to Department of Health, Mr. Teed issued a letter saying that the septic is adequate for two one-bedroom dwelling units. So they'll be revising the upper floor, um, to reduce, uh, the bedrooms by one and creating a new dwelling unit on the bottom. The questions we asked for last time were basically, can we show, can he show us, uh, details of the new entry, walkway, um, steps and the windows? And Mr. Will got to us quickly, Brad, I'll turn it over to you.
Brad, you're muted.
You're still muted? There you are.
I lost the visual now. Where'd you go?
Uh, click on your Zoom link at the bottom.
Yep, you're back. Thank you for reminding me that, um, I was unmuted. Well, really, all I have to add is, is that, that I included those details that were requested. And, uh, that they thankfully made it also into the Z B A set, so thank you for doing that. And I'm really just here to answer any questions, uh, you may have.
Um, again, you propose a window that, uh, will be facing the driveway that can, that is, comports stylistically with those that exist. Um, I think everyone's probably going to agree that what you're proposing is a lot more aesthetically attractive. Than what that big long ramp exists there now, um, that's going to be a nice thing to see to be moved. And otherwise, we're prepared to refer this, uh, application to D C planning because that's required being on a state highway because of the site plan. Um, as well as typing the action, just a note for everyone, um, they're under the, they're at the Z B A for density variance. And I don't know where they stand in that process, um, Mr. Will can tell us if anybody's that interested, but at least this can get it going. And we were planning on also sitting a public hearing for April seventh, if that's acceptable to everybody. Victoria, do you know where this is in, uh, where this is in process with the Z B A by chance? Or Mr. Will, do you?
Well, last, last week was a public hearing and, um, I, I understand. I understand that they're going to be, um, uh, drafting a resolution at their, uh, March twenty-fourth meeting for, for that meeting.
Very appropriate for us to set a public hearing for April seventh, so, um, Ms. France, any additional comments? You're muted now.
He said no.
I'm muted.
The only, um, the only comment we discussed after the package was received was, um, confirming or clarifying. If the applicant wanted to do the pavers or concrete, um, for the sidewalk. I think that was the only item that was discussed.
You were right, thank you for being my memory, and I actually sent that over to Mr. Will and said, I believe that most of the board members think it'd be better to be concrete. Because it seems more in keeping with the era in which the house was built and it seems easier for maintenance in terms of renters potentially being there. Because I know with my pavers, grass sprats out, it's, there's some issues involved with it, um, but thank you.
Yes, you're welcome, and that was it.
Sarah, no comments, right? No. Ms. Moss? Ms. Bolodoro? Anyone from the board want to offer comments?
Concrete is fine.
Uh, Mike, Brad, Brad, do you know if you're, if the owner would prefer concrete or pavers, have you?
I think he would prefer concrete and I, I'm, I'm, I'm very, um. Happy to recommend that he use that material.
Thank you. No other discussion, if there's no other discussion, then I believe, um, it's, we will be having Ms. Weiser introduce this resolution tonight.
Okay, resolution typing action and referring the applicant to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development. DOTICS second dwelling unit, March third, twenty twenty-one, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh three. Whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning by, planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type two action under SECR. Two, directs secretary to refer the application to Duchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section two thirty-nine dash M of the General Municipal Law. Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you, any further discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Age of extensions, motion carries unanimously, and make it a motion to set the public hearing for the second dwelling unit for April seventh, twenty twenty-one.
All moved, Stephanie Wasser.
Second, Anne Weiser.
Thank you, any further discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Will, sorry you had to be so patient to sit through a very long meeting. I hope you were.
Thank you for being so understanding.
I know, I hope you were reading a novel or doing a crossword puzzle or something, because some of our conversations.
You know, it, it's funny, I'll just, I'll just note that I had on a second small screen, my county executive doing a town hall meeting. So I was, I had one ear that way and the other ear this way, trying to, to keep track. So, uh, I think I should have probably written, uh, read, uh, read a book instead, but thank you.
You met your civic's requirement for the evening.
That's exactly right, we'll see you on April seventh, thank you.
Great, thank you all very much.
The next item on the agenda is a recommendation for two wall signs for sign permits. This would be for a new dental office located, um, at five Alexander Drive. Which for locals is just behind the car wash that's on nine G, um, the only car wash in town for that matter.
It was Dr. Christopher's office.
Formerly, and Ms. Henshaper is here, who designed the sign. Um, Kate, sorry it took so long to get this forward and through.
That's okay.
Do you have any comments or questions for Kate?
No.
No.
Nice sign as always.
Oh, thank you.
It's nice.
You know, it wasn't my idea, but you know, it's there and, uh, if we've got approval from you guys for the. Increased height of thirteen inches, that would be great.
The resolution, um, and I kind of rewrote it from what, um, Anne Marie wrote originally. Because I think that Victoria's training that we're supposed to have findings in order to grant these dimensional increases, so. Being the loyal boy to Victoria, I did it and range, range, I'm also going to introduce this resolution. Before I do, Kate, can you tell me am I saying it side saying correctly?
Dr. Si Sang.
Ah, okay.
You did, yes.
Thank you. This is resolution twenty dash twenty-eight, resolution recommendation for issuance of sign permit pursuant to town code section one oh eight dash twenty-four point three A four D. Side saying DDS five thousand and drive parcel six one six four oh two five eight one five nine eight, two replacement wall signs, March third, twenty twenty-one. Whereas, 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 whereas. I was trying to go as fast as you, Councilman Krupnik. Now therefore be it resolved that the board makes the following findings to permit a maximum symbol height of thirteen inches as cited below for the proposed. Side saying DDS wall sign, one, the additional size of the symbol is appropriate given the sign's distance from the road, which is approximately one hundred feet. Increase of size, in size is appropriate due to the size of the building upon which the wall sign is being placed. Be it further resolved, the board grants a relaxation of the standard symbol height to thirteen inches in consideration of the distance to the property access and building size. And be it further resolved, the board hereby recommends that the administrator issue the sign permits for Dr. Si Sang. Based on the sign permit application submitted November twenty-third, twenty twenty by Kathleen Chaper, River Designs by Dandev Designs, Inc., dated eleven twenty-three, twenty twenty.
Second, Anne Dexter.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No nasar extensions, okay, that was unanimous, thank you. Kate, sorry you had to wait all this time too, I hope you somehow enjoyed yourself.
Doing work, yeah, I was listening.
See you, Kate.
And you know, I'm, I, one little comment I have is that, um, the sign for hospice that has the nice flower. That unfortunately is an issue because it's too close to the road. And I still say the town board needs to change that about the design stuff, you know, because now what's going to go behind there? That little flower that they had is not going to be unless they.
No, 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 they're, they're applying to the Z B A for variance, that, that's their, that's their symbol, that starburst they call it.
Yeah, so they'll, so they'll get granted a, an aesthetic merit or whatever.
No, the, the Z B A doesn't look at it, doesn't use those criteria, um, they use their scanner criteria for an area variance, um, impacts to the neighborhood, et cetera. I'm not going to argue for the applicant, but there are signs in the area that have larger symbols.
Of course.
So I think they can, yeah, I think they can make that argument successfully.
Well, it's, it's, you know, um, maybe hospice can afford the, the application fee to the zoning, you know, for the variance. But some smaller businesses can't and it's still a shame that they have to go through that, so I'll be writing letters to them.
No, it's, you know, I understand what you're saying, it's always hard to create a balance, you don't want garish signs with huge symbols everywhere up front. Because then everyone, whatever, as you know, since you designed these and have to do with clients, they always want the biggest they can get wherever.
Right, and then be guided, you know, with kick gloves, but it's doable, you know, and certainly if we had. Another board, you know, like I've always been asking for, the design review committee or something, you guys do a fabulous job. When, when you do all your reviews, but you know, it's something more on your shoulders that you have to deal with, so.
They're big shoulders, girl, don't worry, there's seven of us and they're big shoulders.
All right.
Good to see you, stay safe, stay well, thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Next item on the, next item on the agenda is a recommendation for a site plan waiver for Dave and Robin Upstad. This is a second story addition located at fifty-six River Road, which is actually just outer corner from where I live. It is visible from the river, um, and it is in the scenic view shed or the, uh, scenic area statewide significance. However, I think everyone's had a chance to look at the building, um, I did note for the record that. In the code, buildings that are located within the waterfront district are supposed to be quote unquote, manorial. Um, and I believe that actually this creates a more manorial look by adding the second floor. It also kind of balances off something that's not as attractive in the rear. Right now, it's a kind of a bump out that with a flat roof that this is going to help disguise, Tad, do you want to add anything else? Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? And I believe Stephanie will be introducing this resolution.
Thank you, Neil, okay. Site plan waiver, town code section one oh eight dash nine point four C two. March third, twenty twenty-one, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh six, David and Robin Upstad. Fifty-six River Road, Hyde Park, New York. Whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the town of Hyde Park Planning Board. By Robert J. Dupont, A I A, representing the property owners David and Robin Upstad for property located at fifty-six River Road, Hyde Park, New York. And whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the file entitled. Upstad second floor addition regarding the specific request as received February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. And as identified in the building permit application dated February eighth, twenty twenty-one for this project.
I'll second that.
Further discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and the last item on the agenda is a recommendation for a site plan waiver for a generator to be located at fifteen Crumwell Place. And on this one, Anne, I did not go down and try to look, it's too hard to figure out, but I, I mean, I could have looked by the grid number. But I didn't look to see if this is in the view shed or not, but this is below grade of the building and I believe most of what you've seen that view shed are roof lines if the trees were all removed. So anybody have any questions for this one? We have the recommendation from Tad, I believe Chris is going to introduce this one.
Yep. Site plan waiver, Polistina, town code section one oh eight dash nine point four C two, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine. Whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Joseph Polistina. On March first, two thousand twenty-one, for property located at fifteen Crumold Place in town of Hyde Park. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Polistina. Regarding the specific request as submitted in the building permit application dated November twelfth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, Brad Pickett.
Further discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, just a quick note before we adjourn, um, Mr. Upstad, the Upstads actually own the McDonald's that's in our town. And I always like to give a shout out to him because that's one of the most well-maintained buildings we have and grounds we have in the entire community. It never looks anything sloppy at all, it's great looking. And in addition, um, Mr. Polistina is of course our planning board secretary's father.
Glad to hear he got his generator finally.
Me too. At any rate, um, thank you all, uh, for all your hard work on this, especially tonight. At any rate, um, thank you all, uh, for all your hard work on this, especially tonight because this is a longer meeting than usual. We had a lot to get through and, uh, I think we did so well.
Yeah.
It's a lot of technical stuff to get through. Let's.
A lot of tech stuff.
Bella Field is gonna be, continue to be technical because there's some, when they change things, it changes the easements. It's like a, like the domino, a concatenation effect where it, once you do one thing, it just affects everything else down the way. But, um, thank heavens, as you said, we have Pete and Bonnie working their expertise in magic as well as Victoria. So Megan, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion. Brad Pickett?
I'll second that. Chris Oliver?
Thank you all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Hi, everybody.
Deputy Supervisor. Thank you, Deputy Supervisor Krupnik. Thank you, Mr. Krupnik.